I'm not gonna. But I'm just gonna listen.
So, good evening, everyone. It's 5:01 PM on Monday, July 12th. And we're here tonight for a zoning hearing, zoning board of appeals hearing. We only have one matter on tonight, which is unusual, for lately, we've had a lot. It's just 43 Pleasant Street in the hunt. And I do see that we have the applicants here, and we also have Tony Rosen here, the architect. So, we're gonna get started. I've just pressed the record button, so we are recording at this time. And what we're going to do tonight, just so everybody is aware, is we're going to speak amongst ourselves at times, and then at times, we'll speak to you. We'll start with discussing a few things amongst ourselves. Then we will call the meeting to order. Once we do that, we will introduce the board members, and we will read the hearing notice from the newspaper. Then we'll begin the hearing, and all members of the public will have a chance to speak, whether in favor or against the application. And then we will deliberate the matter amongst ourselves and come to a decision, hopefully, tonight for you. Okay, so before we get started, we have our board members present. Could we please talk and review the board meeting minutes from the last meeting? Make sure we do that every time now. Let me just check to see when the exact date that was. We sent, I sent out board meeting minutes for, June 7th was the last meeting. Did everyone have a chance to review those, and can we get a motion to approve them?
So, we, we had two groups, though, didn't we, on that night? So, that's the night that we?
Yes.
So?
We don't need the same members to approve it necessarily.
Okay.
Or to make a decision that we're going to approve our minutes from the prior meeting.
I make, I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from June 7th.
Do we have a second?
Second, Michael.
That's right, I'm sorry. So, Peter Barber made the motion, and Michael Raworth seconded it.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Cool.
Michael Raworth, aye.
Pete Barber, aye.
Pete Barber, aye?
Max Casper, aye.
Caitlin Kelly, aye.
And Justin Campbell, aye. We have to, just so the members of the public realize, we have to verbally say, because we're on Zoom, whether we approve or not. So, the meeting minutes from the last meeting are now approved, and we are recording, and it's now 5:04 PM. I'm going to call this meeting to order and introduce our board members. My name is Justin Campbell, and I'm the chair of the zoning board. Also with us tonight is Peter Barber, and he is a longtime member. We have Max Casper, who is a member as well. You can't see him, but we can hear him. And we have Michael Raworth and Caitlin Kelly as well, all hearing your matter tonight. And so, whereas Caitlin Kelly and Michael Raworth are associate members, I'm going to appoint them for the purposes of the hearing for tonight. So, I've already explained the hearing process, and now I'm going to read quickly the newspaper article that was, that was published. So, it'll be a 5:00 PM public hearing on the petition filed by Paul and Robin Waters, owners of the property 43 Pleasant Street in the hot Massachusetts, seeking a special permit for the removal of an existing single-family house and construction of a new single-family house. The inspector of buildings has denied their request for a building permit on April 16th, 2021, with proposed new house is in violation of section 7.03 E of the Nahat zoning bylaws, where, notwithstanding any requirements of section 7.03, no structure constituting the principal use located on a non-conforming lot, whether the structure is conforming or non-conforming, may be removed or reconstructed, or removed or replaced elsewhere on such lot without a special permit. Okay? So, let's begin the hearing, and if Mr. Rosen or Mr. Mrs. Waters, whoever's going to be speaking, if you could present your matter.
Er, hi, this is Tony Rosen. I'm the architect for the project. The, just as you read, currently, the lot is not conforming in the R1 district. Just undersized. There is an existing house that's pretty dated and in pretty, pretty bad shape. So, Mr. Mrs. Waters would like to remove that existing house and build, build a new home that in all intents and purposes is conforming to the zoning from setbacks and lot coverage, height, et cetera. It's just on a non-conforming lot. So, we're seeking a special permit to build a new home.
Okay.
The non-conformity of the lot is as to the size, I gather?
That's correct.
Right.
So, this is the one part of, what is, one is actually a couple, but there's a few spots in the hunt where the lot size is required to be 30,000 square feet, correct? 30,000?
Correct, instead of 10, and this is a 12,456 square foot lot.
Okay. So, does anyone have any questions for the applicant or the architect? I do, if no one else does, I can start it. So, Tony, I looked at the plans, I actually bought the property, and I couldn't really determine what the floor area ratio was going to be for the new property.
Somehow, I knew you were gonna ask me that. It's very, it's very low. The houses, the proposed house is about 2,800 square feet versus the 2,100 that's there now.
Okay.
So?
That's what I couldn't figure out, was the total square footage, so I didn't know myself.
Yeah, it's, I suppose it's not listed on Wayne's chart, because it's, you know, not, you know, it's not in violation of the floor ratio, but I, off the top of my head, it's, it's not substantially larger than what's there now.
Okay, I did get 17% for the current premises. So, if it, you know, if we allow 45%, it's gonna be, I'm sure it's in between there, because it's only 28, you said 2,800 square feet.
If I recall.
I also had a question.
Yeah.
About the height.
Yeah. It's on?
I saw the plan, it said 33 feet.
Yeah, you know, 35 foot allowable in this zone.
So, is that another area of relief that you're looking for in addition to the lot size?
No, we're not even, the 33 feet, we're at actually 31 feet from grade.
Oh, you are, and in this 30,000 square foot lot area, you're allowed to go 35 feet in that district?
Correct, correct.
The way you get from 2,100 existing square feet to 2,800 existing square feet is by enlarging, what, the second floor?
It's, it's got a slightly larger footprint, because we're putting in a garage, which does add a little bit on the second floor as well.
Right.
And the number of stories is gonna stay the same? Two and a half stories? Sorry, Peter.
What's, I'm sorry, what was that?
Being at two and a half stories in height?
Uh, it's, yeah, it's two, it's more or less two. There's, there's a very low pitched attic that I don't, I don't think there's hardly any square footage, accountable square footage up there, and the basement's totally below grade.
So, so, the existing house had no non-conforming, no, no non-conformities other than it's, it doesn't, you know, the lot size? And the new house has no non-conformities other than the lot size?
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions?
I have a question, Janice Dolan.
Okay, wait a minute, you, can you hold on for a second?
Sure.
I'm asking the board right now, just one more minute, okay?
Oh, sorry.
Let's make sure they're all done with their questions first, then we'll get into the public comment.
Sorry, I just had one. I went by the site recently, and it looked to me like there had been some clearing. Have you guys already started clearing on the site by any chance, or was it already cleared when you purchased it?
You're talking about the trees that were down, Caitlin?
Yeah.
I saw that too.
Yeah, Dakota Tree came and took some trees down, yeah.
There were, there were quite a few trees that were in really bad shape, which were taken down at some point over the winter. They would have come down regardless, because they were, they were dead and decaying, especially on the front, the front areas, and then I would suppose I'd let the water speak to the, sort of the rear property line and what was discussed there. But?
Yeah. Yeah, Jim, that's, the Dolan's property back there, and he cleared some of that himself. But, but yeah, the trees were, you did take some trees down.
Great, thank you. Do any of the members of the board have any more questions for the architect or for the owners?
I'm good.
I'm good, too.
All set.
Okay, so at this point in time, I'm going to ask if any of the members of the public who are present would like to speak in favor of the petition. And, no one has replied. Is anyone present who would like to speak in opposition of the petition?
Yes, I would. This is James.
Your name, sir?
Yeah, James Dolan. This is James, 45 Pleasant Street.
45 Pleasant?
Correct. Now, well, while we have opposition to it, we also have a proposal. This is James J. Dolan and Janet E. Dolan for 45 Pleasant Street in the hot Mass, which we got the meeting 856-1127-7272. Passcode 92310, Zoom meeting. James J. Dolan and Janet E. Dolan would like to submit our opposition to a special permit. However, if the five town trees, those are town trees, that board of 43 present are replaced with five properly sized town trees, we would withdraw our opposition.
Okay, one second, please. I'm getting a town, I'm calling Redna Hut thing on my phone. So, you're, Mr. Nolan, your opposition is in regard to the five, there were five trees removed, is that what you're saying?
Five or six?
Five, yes. There may have been six, but roughly five trees, five.
Which ones are those, Jim? Were those the ones right on the road, right?
Yeah, yes.
If, but believe me, if those were town trees, we would have had the town pay for them. Those were our, those were our trees.
Well, I'm not so sure they are. I'm not sure that's true.
Well, we had the tree warden come over and tell us they were our trees. We're responsible for them.
Well, they're on, they're on the property line. They're on the, they're on the road.
Yeah, I mean, the intention is to put, plant new trees. That's, that's our intention. We're not gonna, we're gonna plant some ornamental trees. I mean, not gonna.
Well, again, I'm not sure what the tree warden said to you. However, I asked the tree warden to come down. He never showed up.
Yeah.
And so, I don't, I, I don't know that he's either right or wrong. However.
Nolan, can I ask you, how long have you lived there at 49?
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Forty-five, I'm sorry, forty-five.
Ah, 30 years.
It's a beautiful spot you have. I drove over there, and I was, I didn't want, it was so nice over there.
Thank you.
And, and until those trees came down, it was always beautiful there.
Those were dead trees.
You know, the, I can tell you that when I owned my house, my last house, the, the town planted trees in my, in my yard. It was part of the development that I was in. But I think what you're talking about is something different. You think that perhaps they were on the actual line of the lot in the town, town land.
Yeah, but I, I had a tree, I had a tree in my front yard that was on, it was literally, the sidewalk is damaged, because it was, you know, half in the sidewalk and half on my property. And it got struck by lightning a couple of times, and I got tired of having large limbs fall on my car. And when I talked to the tree warden, he said to me that, you know, this is your tree to deal with, even though it's partially on the town line, you know, town property, this is, you know, yours to deal with, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that, may I, may I?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Dolan.
Just for the record, it's Dolan, D as in David.
Mr. Dolan, I'm sorry, Dolan. I'm sorry. I have a Zoom to hear exactly.
The, the research I did was such that they are, in fact, town trees. And considerable process of doing work on that. There are few, if any, other town trees in the hunt of that substance and size and circular circumference. If, but, but we may have a solution this, I don't want those trees to, if we're gonna go and put five trees back in that are comparable in size, we would drop our opposition.
Yeah, that's our intention. Our intention is to plant some nice trees there. We haven't decided which variety yet. We plant on a maple tree. We have, we picked out actually a few trees already that are gonna be similar in size. It's just gonna take a little, little time to grow to that height, of course, but, but yeah, we're, we're gonna have it.
Say, would, would, do you, would you presume the size of the trees, the circumference of the trees would be comparable?
In time, of course. Those trees were probably, you know, 70 years old.
Yeah.
So, it'll take time, but our intention is to get a, I mean, Tony, we're gonna, we planned on, you know, using a landscape architect to come in and give us a plan and plant, plant some, it's gonna look great. I mean, you know.
For sure. A little tricky for me, because as the architect, but, you know, those trees were, were looked at by Dakota Tree Service and assessed, and there were no, there was nothing living on those trees, so.
But they were green trees. They all, they bloomed every, every year. They were always green.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna argue that. I just know from, let me, let me rephrase and say, from my experience of having gone over there during the summer last year, they were, there was nothing blooming on those trees last summer. And I've been, I've been over there. I walk this area, but specifically working with the waters last summer and before last summer, the entire time that I would go to the site, they were, there was nothing blooming, and they were assessed as unhealthy. And so, and I'm, I'm not trying to argue, I'm just speaking it to what I knew about it. I didn't make the decision to take them down. I wasn't involved with that. But they were, they're substantially large diameter trees. And, and not something that could be specifically replaced today. You can't, you can't do it. I had the town take down a tree adjacent to my property that was beautiful, and it wasn't, it wasn't, you know, it's just not possible to replace a tree like that. Had it been healthy, I would say this is a different story, but it was, they were unhealthy and in danger of coming down on the house, if, if left there.
I mean, we were, Jan, I mean, we really wanted to get some light in there, too. Those trees were too big for that, for that spot. There was no light coming in, into our, into the space there, so it was just really, we really needed some light in the area, and you know, we're gonna, like I said, we're gonna replant trees there. It's gonna look great. You're gonna love it. It's gonna look, it's gonna bring value to the, to your neighborhood, and, you know.
And I agree with that. My only comment would be that, that what's, what could go in there, what will go in there, is gonna be better than what was there, because they will be healthy.
Yeah.
And more in keeping with what should be there, because those were overgrown and unhealthy trees.
Yeah.
I have a question. The plans that were submitted to the town, the architectural plans, do they have in the plan, the planting of new trees in, along the Pleasant Street side?
I haven't seen that, this is still.
No, it's, they're not on, they're not on the plans.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Because we don't require an architectural plan. We don't require, I know, a landscaping plan. For our perspective, for this zoning only, we're just looking at the structure, the size, the, the frontage, things like that. But if we have the waters telling us that they are going to plant trees along that line, along that lot line, where the prior trees were, which is the front of the house, I don't see why we can't make that a condition of the special permit.
Oh, yeah. Obviously, we're not gonna have an empty lot. Yeah, we're gonna have it professionally landscaped, and it's gonna look really good, so. I, I just planted a nice birch tree here in my yard and a pear tree last year, so there, I like planting new trees.
The question is how to, how to word the condition so as to satisfy everybody?
Right, we can, we can put a condition in that the, you know, that, you know, no less than five trees be planted.
Sure. That's fine.
I, I, I guess, having lived with those trees when they went before somebody cut them down, is not an insignificant sized tree.
They were big trees.
Yeah.
Maybe like, you're asking for like a mature, right, a mature tree to be planted.
So, if somebody said, this is a substantial sized tree, and we can have it in there of considerable size, I'd probably, Jen, I'd probably be willing to acquiesce to that. But we're disappointed that the trees would come, will come down. We would never notify of it. And we say it's, has these problems. Maybe it did, and maybe we never saw it. We didn't, we know it. However, we do have particular great pictures of many times walking down the street with those very large trees in place with blooms on them.
Understood. So, to replace a tree with that magnitude, that width, I know from just past experience, you can't do it exactly quite like that. They could get as big as possible, but even if they brought a crane in, you know, and were able to find a tree that they could dig with the roots, I'm not sure that that could be done that big, but is it gonna have to start with a small tree?
Same size. I mean, I don't know.
It's also, it's also cost prohibitive. I mean, I've, I've seen this a few times with, with different projects, different clients, even my own home, where the, the town actually cut down a tree that they weren't supposed to. This happened about 15 years ago. It was a 50 to 70 foot tree adjacent to my property, and it was actually illegally cut down by the town. And we tried to get something back, and I had a landscape architect tell me that, that a tree of that nature, which isn't this, it was, would be anywhere from $20,000 to $40,000 just to purchase the tree at that kind of maturity.
Wow.
And to transport it, even if they had the machines, and it would take a full trailer and a large spade, and you're talking about, you know, it's substantial. And with it, I understand, believe me, I understand the sentimentality. I had it happen to me in my home. But it was a healthy tree versus an unhealthy tree, and I'm, and I understand change is difficult with something that you guys, you have a beautiful spot, and coming down that, that street was beautiful. But, you know, I, I'm not sure how, you know, if we weren't applying for a special permit, and these trees were on their property, they would have the right to take them down, because they're unhealthy, and they're threatening, they were threat, you know, to have a limb come down, and there were quite a few limbs around this property from, that had come down, including behind them of substantial size that were coming down. And so, those things need to be dealt with to preserve, you know, the property. And even though we're taking this house down, if we weren't, if we weren't here tonight, they would have the right to take those trees down if they were unhealthy. Even if they weren't unhealthy, if they're on their property, they can do that, as, and they went through the steps of making sure that they were their trees, and they were their responsibility, and they removed them by right. And so, I'm not sure, you know, we can say, hey, we're gonna do it nice, it's gonna be pretty, there's gonna be healthy trees there that are gonna make that neighborhood and that street beautiful by the time this is done. But I, I think we have to be careful about committing to something we actually can't achieve.
As Mr. Raworth said, how do we, how do we word the?
Replacement.
The, yeah, thank you, the replacement, so that it is in the record of the special permit.
If the waters have agreed that they will plant at least five trees on the property, you know, we all understand, based upon the explanations and everything, that they're not going to be the same size as they were. They're going to be small trees, but they're going to grow, and they're going to have a landscape architect they, they testified to that will pick a nice trees, not, no one wants to build a beautiful home and have it be surrounded by bad trees. So, they're gonna do the best they can to make it beautiful, but we can certainly add some language to the special permit if we, in fact, have a, a vote, if we decide to have a vote that allows it. That's a, that's a condition.
Justin, can I ask a question for Tony?
Sure.
Tony, what's a, what's a sized tree that is like reasonable to put on, put in when you're, you know, replanting? I, I'm not expecting a 100-year-old tree to be replanted. That's absurd, right? But like, is a six-inch caliper a reasonable type tree to put in along and let it grow? Or can we have some language to kind of give some direction?
That's a good question, Max. I, I very well could stick my foot enough with, with saying that that's, oh, that's okay, because depending on the, the species of tree, I don't know what six-inch caliper, not being a landscape architect, I don't know what six-inch caliper would mean for different species. I, you know, I know I planted, planted some different ones, and, you know, a tree that's 10 feet tall is fairly mature, takes a long time to get it, you know, depending on the species. Some grow fast, some grow a little slower. And, you know, they can, again, they can, you could be talking about anywhere from $5,000 to $50,000 for trees, for five trees, depending on, that's why I say we have to be careful about the language we put here, because they could, you know, putting a requirement on them to do this when they took these trees down by right.
Right.
Help me understand, when you say the trees came down by right, what's that mean? How do you say that?
I, I could explain that maybe for you, and that what Mr. Rosen is saying is that even if they didn't, if the applicants didn't need a special permit, they could have taken down the trees.
Why, why would they permit, be permitted to do that?
Because they were their trees.
How would, how did, how did they define their trees?
They had the war tree warden come down and tell them whether or not they were their trees.
I, I've spoken to the tree warden before. He's never come here to respond to me.
Mr. Waters, didn't you testify that, excuse me, Mr. Dolan, Mr. Waters, didn't you testify that the tree warden came down and told you they were your trees?
It's the, we were responsible for tending to them, take, pruning them wherever they were our trees. That's correct.
He, he may have said that.
Well, and if you, if you look at our property line, our property line goes up to the street. Those, those trees were, those trees are our, our trees. They're on our property.
Well.
I, I would have loved to have the, the town, I wish there were town trees, then we wouldn't have had to pay the $10,000 to have them taken down.
And this, who was the person who said they were town trees?
Do you remember?
Nolan.
I don't remember.
Good.
Do you remember who his name was?
I thought you did, Mr. Dolan, but we.
My, I'm contending, they, they weren't town trees.
Okay. Okay.
Or they were.
No, you're contending they were town trees.
I'm not. I'm, I'm contending they were not town trees.
Oh, then.
I'm sorry, that, that they were town trees, yes. Yes, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay, we get it. So, the best we can do, Mr. Dolan, is to say, we can try to help, and the waters have graciously agreed that they would be willing to abide by that. If we can put it in our, as in our decision, it's a condition that they plant at least five trees on the property. We can't guarantee the size. It's gonna be up to them and their landscape architect, but they're telling you they're going to do their best and make it as nice as they can. And that is really all we can do tonight. And I hope that that's sufficient, and that everybody's in agreement, and it's a valid thing that you raised. I mean, nobody wants to come and find their view, or their tree's gone, and it's, it's a bad thing. So, I totally get it. Did anybody want to add? There was another person who came online while we were talking. Is there any other person present who would like to speak, they're in favor or against the applicant? Is there any other person, person would like to speak? They're in favor or against the application? Hi, sir. We'll. Keep seeing his picture for his bar. Okay. All right. Do any of the members of the board have any further questions for any of the people here tonight?
May I make a request?
Mr. Dolan, sure.
Who, there's somebody on the, on the, uh, board here who said they came down and they determined that they were. Unwell trees and it was acceptable to remove them.
May just point out that was not somebody on the board. That was, um, Tony Rusian, who is the, um, the water's architect who spoke on their behalf.
And that was relayed from the, a, a tree, more of what I would call a tree specialist. I didn't make that determination. I just. Observe that there was nothing, nothing blooming throughout the year last year while I was there, but. The final determination was not made by me. It was made by somebody who's a tree specialist.
And who was that?
The, the Dakota Tree Service, Mark.
People that took them down.
This is same people that took trees down. She was the strongest one out of all the.
Hey, excuse me for a moment. Sir, there's somebody on the iPhone. Could you mute yourself, please? We're hearing your conversation. Yeah, sir. Yes, thank you very much.
There you go.
Okay. So did that answer your question, Mr. Dolan?
Is this going to be on the, on the record of the zoning board of appeals? This, um. Was more than a request, it's like somewhat of a condition. That the waters have agreed to, but how do we have a, a record? Yes, this is on the record. This is what they're going to do.
I'll tell you a couple of ways. One of them is, first of all, this is videotaped. This, this is going to be posted on the town website as soon as we get off this call. That's one. Number two, in our special permit decision, we're going to make a note of it. So you'll see it in writing as well.
Well, I, 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 first of all, thank you very much. However. Dakota Tree. Were the people who came down and said, these, they, these are diseased. These are diseased and should be removed. Well. That, that's a, uh. A, a conflict of interest. People who want to cut the tree down because they make a buck out of it.
Too far down the discussion of these trees. I mean, we're not here to decide whose trees they were or to decide. Whether they were sick or not. That's not our jurisdiction. Now, we, we're at the point where we're going to bake into a decision that. They're going to plant new trees. I mean, what more can you ask of us as a, as a zoning board? Than to, than to address the trees reasonably in the decision? Anything beyond that is, is, is in excess of. Our role as, as the zoning board. This is not the, the time to, to. Decide exactly what happened with the, with the old trees, frankly.
Right.
Well, the other factor is, the other factor is that the old trees are gone and nobody can do anything about that. So, uh, if they're, to the extent that, uh, that the neighbors at the Dolans have some complaint about that. That, that is not something that's within our jurisdiction. The, the act of having taken down the old trees, whether they were healthy or not. Uh, it is, uh, if you will, it's a matter of sort of an effort at, at mediating this, uh, this, uh. Uh, proposed opposition that we deal with the possibility of putting in, if you will, trees in replacement. But as was pointed out, that's not really our jurisdiction. We're just trying to find a peaceful way to resolve this. And, um, you know, we'll, we'll see what we can do that, with wording in that that will be helpful. But, um, assuming that, that that is. Let's, let's assume that we couldn't come up with wording that was satisfactory to the Dolans. And that they maintained their objection. So then we would have to vote on whether or not the special permit can be granted. In the light of that objection.
And the object. Yeah, the objection isn't to the, the actual building of the house. It has nothing to do with the house. It has to. It has to do with the fact that there were some trees cut down.
Which is, if you will, a coincidence in time. It doesn't really affect the, uh, the demolition and the new construction.
Correct.
So essentially, Mr. and Mrs. Dolan, we've heard your complaint and the, your neighbors have heard the complaint. And they've offered graciously to say, yeah, we will plant five more trees. We're happy to do so. That's the best that they can do. Uh, if you have any further, you know, um, inquiry about it, I suggest you could take it up with the town. I'm not sure where or how, but. It's not really, again, Max, Casper pointed out, we can't do any more for you than that. And even that, I think, is pushing it because it's not really part of our, our job to do that.
Well, let, let me back you up for a second. What you're telling me is somebody who comes in, whose business. Is to take the trees down was the, the decider to take down what I call town trees. Because of their size and the fact they're out to the, beyond the, uh, reach of the property and onto the street.
Well, I think that there, there was, there was input received from the tree service. And vis a vis the conflict of interest, I understand your point, but the same thing. You, you could say to your heart surgeon, your heart surgeon says, I need to do an operation to fix your heart. You don't accuse him of conflict of interest, except that he's, he's the guy who's getting the fee for the, for the service. So that's a valid point to be considered, but I would suggest that it's not, uh, as determinative. Even if there had been no tree service individual come out and provide the, the opinion that the trees were dangerous. The, on, on the assumption that we are correct that they were on the applicant's property. They would have had the right to take the trees down just because, uh, for aesthetic reasons, that just because they didn't like them. So we understand you're, you're concerned that they were town trees. Um, and to the extent that you were correct about that, it may be that there's something you could do with the, with the help of the town. To get some remedy about having them, uh, about them having been taken down. But that would be the same as if they'd been done a year ago independently of this, this application. It just seems to be, it, it's a coincidence that the trees come down, you are concerned and we have this application now. But we have to make sure that, that the one does not improperly influence the other. You're obviously free to, to go to the town and say. Uh, come along and rule that these were town trees and then whatever remedy there may be against the applicants. Fair enough. That may be the case. I don't know. I have no idea. But i- if that's so, it is, and if it isn't, it isn't, but it doesn't affect what the ZBA has the power to do.
I've heard what you said. I don't agree with it.
Well, thank you. We, we really appreciate what you did have to say and we tried to address it. Um, so we're going to move on. And, um, so right now what's going to happen is the board's going to speak to themselves, each other. And we're going to make a decision about this matter. Okay? All right. So Peter, Max, Caitlin, Michael, what do you guys think?
Well, to Mike. Go ahead, Caitlin.
I was gonna say, I honestly asked about the trees to begin with because I was concerned that if there was a special permit necessary, that they were being cleared before getting the special permit. Um, but when I heard that the town warden came out and had already like assessed the trees and determined that that was on their property, they could clear it. You know, I, my concerns were laid. So just to put that out there, that's why I asked the question about the trees to begin with.
Okay. And how does everyone feel about the special permit?
I don't, I mean, to my questioning before, the existing dwelling, um, other than the. Um. The size of the lot. Uh, had no, um. Had, had no non-conformities. Thank you, Michael. Had no non-conformities. And the new house has no non-conformities. I mean, if, if they were coming in front of us and, you know. Well, you know, we want to put the house on the front of the lot and, and we had to look at, you know, front setback or side setback. I mean, they're essentially taking down an older. Piece of property or an older dwelling and putting up a new dwelling. Uh, you know, I. I don't think there's a.
But it doesn't seem to be much bigger, so.
Yeah, yeah, but it's still not infringing on any other setbacks or any other, you know, glory ratio or any of that. It's, I mean.
And, and the applicants have the right to maintain the existing building. They could repair it. At, at great expense and, you know, none of that would, would, would implicate our authority. Or would implicate any, uh, I mean, they'd have to get a building permit for what they do, but repairs are not going to be, uh, ruled out by, by Wayne. So, uh, it's a question of do you have a, a, a newer, uh, value enhanced structure? Or the older structure which may need to be repaired? And it seems to me that, that, that neither of those, well, that, that, that the, that the new structure. Uh, creates any downside to neighbors and have, actually, we have not been. Presented with any objections to the new structure as such.
Right, and Max, you're more the expert on this, but, you know. It's a, it's a, an existing non-conformity and they're not increasing that non-conformity. So. Uh, it, I mean, that to me doesn't seem like it's an issue.
No, I, I, I think they, you know, they do need a special permit because there's, it's a, it's a total reconstruction on an undersized lot. Um, so I think it's, you know, it's proper to be here, but. Um, I, no- nothing really jumps out at me as, as problematic or, or detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, on the proposed plan, so.
Right.
Um.
Anyone want to move for finding them as to, um, the criteria?
Sure, that, go ahead, Peter.
Uh, you, go ahead, Michael. You were first.
We stepped on each other. So I would move that the board find that the, uh, that the proposed. Action on the lot is not substantially more detrimental than the existing situation.
And I'll, I'll second that.
Peter Barber?
Yep.
A discussion on the motion? All in favor of the finding of that motion?
Peter Barber says aye.
Max Casper, aye.
And Justin Campbell, aye. Okay, so we've made a finding that, um, the alteration or extension would not be more detrimental to the existing non-conformity in the neighborhood. Uh, to the neighborhood. Yeah, do you think we have sufficient, um, information to bring the motion?
So, uh, I'll make a motion that we grant a special permit. Um, so that the structure be built per plans presented. And that, um, no less than five, uh, trees be planted. On the property to replace trees that were removed.
Thank you.
Second.
And it was seconded by Michael Raworth?
Right.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Peter Barber says aye.
Mike Raworth, aye.
Axe Casper, aye.
And Dawson Campbell, aye. Okay, so Mr. and Mrs. Waters, uh, we just granted you a special permit for the construction. And, um, at this point in time, all we're going to do is we're going to write up the decision. We're getting faster at it now. We used to take two weeks or so, but now getting faster. We'll probably have that within the week. Um, we'll file it with the clerk and then there's a twenty day appeal period after that. And after that, you're free to, to do as you please. Okay? Um, so anybody who does want to appeal this matter, they would have to appeal it in that twenty day period. All right, so, um, then motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Wait, before everybody goes, what about the dates? Not, not all the map, just the members. We have to talk about dates for our next hearing. So, bye, Mr. and Mrs. Dolan. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd see you. Take care. Thank you. Can I just solidify the dates for the next hearing? I know, Peter, you're going to be sailing in the Caribbean or something, right?
Not Europe.
Europe, okay, Europe.
Going from Ireland to Germany.
Wow.
Wow, that sounds amazing.
I might run into you. I want to be over there myself.
Oh, yeah? Where are you going to be?
Well, um, the, I think it's the first week of September I'm going to be in. You might be back by then. I think we'll.
Oh, I'm going to be back, yeah.
You could get there from there.
Scotland. Scotland, anyway.
So we're supposed to sail Scotland, but because of the Indian variance, there may be difficulty getting into Scotland. So you may want to check on that. By then it may have opened, be more open. I think it's opening up now.
That's what I heard, yeah.
We haven't changed our plans, um.
I'm staying away from the planning of the trip. My, 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 my good friend is doing it, my friend Debbie. She and her husband were close friends of my late husband and they. Invited me and my new husband to go. They like.
Oh, nice.
Oh, they invited us to go to with them on this trip.
Awesome.
I don't like to fly, so I don't really want to talk about it too much. But anyway, let's talk about availability. So, so far August ninth seems the best day for everyone. Um, I've got no to Peter, but a yes to Max and yes to me on that day. Michael and Caitlin, are you available on August ninth? Sorry. Michael, you said yes?
Yes.
Okay.
I am also available.
You are, okay.
Yep.
So one, two, three, four. So we have to check with David Walsh and if he's available, then we can do August ninth. Because right now we're short a member because of David McCool, um, resigning, although he said he would help us if we were in dire straits. Um, so we only have six members now. So if we lose one, then we're, we're in trouble. And like on August second, we have two people who can't do it. And like August sixteenth, we have two people who can't do it. So August ninth looks the best so far.
Any, uh. Any thoughts on, on getting another appointment?
No, Tony had another person. So I will, I'll reach out to him.
Okay.
I'll send him an email.
Hey, and I, and I don't know if it's, if, if I can even bring this up, but, um, the letter that was attached to your reminder today from the planning board.
I know, I know, I know, I'm sorry.
So.
Sorry, sorry, I sent you so much stuff.
Yeah, no, but can I ask the question? Is, is this overreaching for the planning board?
You know, they're entitled to give their comments and their opinion. Um, we can either take it or we cannot take it, you know. It just so happens. In regard to that application, I did ask him to ask the applicants already to give us updated plans. Because the plans really weren't sufficient.
Right, right. And, and I, and I totally get that, but, but when he goes into the second part of it where. If, you know, if people bring in additional information to a hearing. They're asking to have, you know, like extended for fourteen days so that they can look at it. And I. I, I, I don't know. I think that's overreaching. I think that's, um. I, I don't know that, I mean, like you said, we can take their recommendation or we could not take their recommendation. So. The fact that we have additional information on the meeting night, to me, doesn't make a bit of difference, other than it may change their mind. One way or the other.
Just so you know, this question was posed to me previously. And what I said in response was, and I don't know if you were, you were around at that time, but what I said in response was. We, when we get some new information on the night of a hearing, what we typically do is if it changes the application substantially, obviously we'll reject. And we'll say you have to reply or get a continuance or something. But if it doesn't change substantially, then what are we going to do? We're going to have to make a decision on our own of whether or not to accept the item.
I think it's like the boy who cried wolf, like if the, if the planning board would like, give us a letter every once in a while that. Had a really important thing on it, I'd really value it. But it's like they're sending us these crazy letters all the time. And it's like, I don't even want to read them, to tell you the truth. So if they really want to control what's going on in the zoning board so much. Maybe some of them should quit the planning board and join the zoning board, you know?
Well, no, they should, they should reexamine the zoning, the zoning bylaws and make it tighter or whatever. They, they, you know, like, again, you, you know, special permit, not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. I have yet to get a really clear cut. Definition of what is and what isn't substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. And, and maybe if the planning board put a good definition. Our lives would be a lot easier.
But that's what the definition is by law. So we are stuck with that, but we can interpret it. And I think we tried, we tried very hard.
Right, oh, no, we, I think we do a great job. I just, I, I kind of agree with Max that we get a letter for every. Time something comes in front of us. Right, oh, no, we I think we do a great job. I just I kind of agree with Max that we get a letter for every time something comes in front of us. And that's why I feel like it's overreaching. It's our job as the zoning board of appeals. Yes, the planning board is the one that that they don't even write zoning bylaws. They recommend them.
Well, we can also write, we can write them too, you know.
Oh, no, I know, I know. Well, anybody can. I wrote a bylaw for the animals that was passed a town meeting, so anybody can write the bylaw. The the way it was described to me is if you're writing a zoning bylaw, you really want to have the buy-in of your planning board. They're they're they don't write them, they don't, you know, but they're a very helpful step in getting them approved. And I just, and you know, I I know Dan Berman and I like Dan. I just think that this is a little bit overreaching where we would delay somebody for 14 days for some supplementary submission that may or may not have any huge
We wouldn't do that, Peter. I don't think we would do that unless it was a there was a change to the application.
Right, right.
And then we would do it.
The submissions, obviously, the whole application includes the submissions. And if there's late submissions, it's a judgment call as to whether it's substantial enough you know, to warrant new input from the planning board. I haven't looked at the at the provisions that deal with the planning board's input. And it strikes me that Dan Berman is simply being more energetic than past chairs of the planning board.
You're right.
And and, you know, it it may be, if you will, a little bit annoying, but on the other hand, we don't have to, we don't have to take that much cognizance of it, you know, it's a recommendation. Right. Yeah, but it also strikes me that that it does make sense to call upon applicants, if you will, to fish or cut bait if they if they want something to be considered by the the deciding authority, which is us with the input of the planning board, that they have a cutoff date that by which they've got to have a complete package so it can be, you know, evaluated by both players. I mean, the danger is that somebody comes up with something that that doesn't seem that significant to us. We don't, you know, put our get our teeth into it. And the planning board, when they find out about it, tells us, oh, wow, that makes a lot of difference. And we thought of something that, you know, you guys overlook.
But it's our judgment call, Michael.
I understand it. I understand it is, but our judgments can be questioned even though we have the power to make them.
Use tonight's use tonight's hearing as as an example. What if the what if the Dolans had spoken to you know, the, well, not not just the tree surgeon, but no, if they had spoken to their neighbors ahead of time and said, hey, listen, you cut down those beautiful trees and the neighbor said, well, we're gonna add trees. And they brought a supplemental sheet that they gave to us that said, we're gonna plant five trees here, 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 and here. Do we need to send that back to the planning board? I don't believe so, you know. I think it just helps us to get through it like we did tonight.
If this substantial change is what we've always done, we withdraw it, we tell them to withdraw, or we continue the matter. If it's not a substantial change, then we go forward. We have to make that judgment call because we are the ones that are appointed to do so.
So we would have the power, let's say, somebody on the last day or two before the hearing comes in with something that we consider to be substantial. We have the power to basically say, okay, we're not going to consider this at the meeting schedule for tomorrow night because you've added substantially and we're gonna postpone you so that the planning board has the power to digest this, correct?
We wouldn't postpone it for that purpose, but we would postpone it because we would be a new application generally. Let me just point out that, for example, on the Ji Zhang matter, on the matter on Wilson Road, for example, on the night that he presented his testimony, he presented a whole new matter, a whole new thing. So we said, okay, we're gonna have to continue this for a substantial period of time or you're gonna withdraw your application. And he withdrew his application. So that seems to be what happens. There's no, it's not one of those things that's really clear cut. I think we continue to try and do the best job that we can. And if people bring in, people do sometimes file things the night of the hearing, that's pretty common. We can't say no to it completely. We don't like it.
Well, I mean, we could definitely say no to it. I mean, courts have all kinds of deadlines and, you know, you there's some remedy if you don't comply with them. The question is whether it's important enough to to, you know, to to put a to put a delay on the proceeding.
What I mean, Peter, Michael, is sometimes people will come in with a picture or something like that.
Right, yeah.
You know, but like today, for example, I spoke to Kim and I'd be emailed in the planning department. And I, you know, there is a checklist and I said, you know, can you please institute the checklist? So she's doing that from this point forward. So make sure the applications are complete.
All right, so the checklist has something that will tend to discourage last minute submissions additions.
Right, and they should have been checked all along, but I think the applications aren't always checked to see whether they're sufficient. But now, you know, I just communicated with her about that today and reminded her about this, so she's gonna do it. Kim's gonna make sure that they're complete, plans are complete, so we can move forward.
You know, maybe maybe the thing would be helped if we put some sort of a proviso in the papers that applicants receive when they're dealing with Kim that basically says, you know, you 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 put yourself at risk if you submit anything at the last minute, that we may have to consider this a modification of the application and oblige you to withdraw and resubmit. So at least they're alerted that there is a potential downside to doing that, right?
I think it's in there. I think there's something in there in the bylaws and not the bylaws, but the rules and regs and on the application about that. I'll take a look.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's great. It's great if there is. It would strike me, it would I mean, a lot of this this back and forth would be potentially eliminated if we could better educate the applicant pool, you know, and perhaps perhaps put something in, you know, maybe put the wording in bold so that they have a harder time overlooking it, you know?
I understand completely. All right, so maybe what we could do is we could think about that. And I actually, when I was on vacation last week, I got a call from one of the people from CPTC about the training, so I gotta call them back. And I want to tell them in the fall would be best because that way they're you're back from your trip, Peter, and back from my trip. We'll plan on, say, September, late September, maybe October.
Okay.
For the training.
Yep.
Sailing with the same boat, Peter?
Yeah, yeah, the forty-four Alden.
Where does he live now?
Keel, Germany.
Oh, he moved back to Germany?
Well, yeah, he's back and forth, but he spends more time there and, you know, the boats, the boat was in Ireland. It got there, obviously, before COVID. Last summer, we were supposed to sail up over the top of Scotland to the Outer Hebrides and the Shetland Islands and then over to Norway, which unfortunately we can't do, so we're gonna bring the boat back to Germany. And with any luck, we'll be able to stop in a couple of ports in France.
So you're gonna go through the through the English Channel this time instead of around the top?
Yep, English Channel up to the Keel Canal.
Yeah, so that that route around the north of England and Scotland is pretty rough. Yes, summer, it's pretty, you could really take a beating up there.
Yes, and
That's what kicked the ass of the Spanish Armada, really.
Yeah, and I'm actually pretty, I'm pretty content with doing what we're doing. The highlight, we're talking about putting in some port someplace and renting a car and doing the the beaches of Normandy. So I've already been to the beaches, but to go back again, I'd do it in a heartbeat. It's such an awesome place to go. So alrighty.
All right, guys, you know, we've been recorded the whole time.
Well, people are gonna, is there any way to cut that short?
I'll try.
Alrighty. Have a good night, everybody. Hey, we'll see you at the wall that heals.
Yeah. Bye.
And I have a motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn.
So it was made and seconded.
Seconded.
Yes. I vote aye, Pete Barber.
Bye.
Take care.